Take a look at the minutes and we'll deal with those first. Minutes of September ninth first.
You were absent, you're right.
Ed was absent, no?
Ed was absent.
Oh, then I don't know if we can-
No, you have me as absolute, I was here.
Yeah, you were here.
Oh, it has, she was absent, I didn't think.
That's my problem, I was present.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September ninth, uh, submitted.
I'm sorry, Ed.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September ninth, I submitted.
And is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we accept the-
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so much for the minutes.
A bit of this.
The first presentation is by the Purdees on Shivertown Road for an area variance. Do we have representatives of the Purdy family here? Would you like to join us up here? And if you'll just introduce yourselves to the board.
I'm Elaine Purdy.
You're Elaine?
Yes, and that's my daughter Brianna.
And we met?
No.
No? There was a daughter that I met.
Marissa, yes, that's my youngest daughter.
Would you briefly tell the board what it is that you're applying for in regards to the variance? Just summarize, you gave us a very lovely thorough application, complete with pictures which we appreciate, but verbally summarize for us if you would.
Uh, I need a rear setback variance for my pool.
A little louder.
I need a rear setback variance for my pool and deck. So I have a flag lot property. So the distance from my house to the, you know, my rear property line is maybe almost fifty feet. So the pool is close to the house to keep it further from the property line. And it's also the only level area.
So basically it's too close to the house?
It's too close to the house and I believe it's too close to the property line in the back. It's a fifty foot setback.
Did, did you folks get a chance to get out to the pool and property?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Still you did too.
I did.
Yeah, I did as well. Was the, the pool, was the pool in the deck there when you bought the house?
My parents bought the house and I inherited it from my parents.
So they put the pool in and the deck in?
Yes, but they said there was a, a pool there prior to, before they put another one up, there was a pool there.
The deck was there also.
And the deck was there also.
You got the pool, was it same size?
I believe so, just from the, the debris that was there and the sand that was there. And I have letters from some of my neighbors.
Yes, I'd be interested in the letters from your neighbors, did you make copies for the board?
I didn't.
Okay, we will let, uh, did you give them to me? I'll just let you know, uh, one of the points, he's not here now, one of our board members is a neighbor, Bob Hughes is your neighbor, and I believe his property line abuts your property line.
No.
No?
Mm-mm.
He's what?
He's next to, uh, Mark Hoffman's property.
So there is a property in, in between?
Yes.
Yeah. Judy, who is Bob's wife, has written this letter, and we'll give you copies, but basically says that, uh, there's no issue. Pauline Williams has no problem.
So both the pool and the deck need to be fifty feet?
Yes.
Alright, so there's an issue of the pool and the deck, neither of which is fifty feet from the property line, and the pool, which is supposed to be ten feet from the house, which is five feet from the house.
Any other neighbors that wrote, uh, with saying that they have no problem, Kelly Ritchie and, uh-
I'm Donna here.
Okay, Donna.
What year did you inherit the house?
In two thousand and eight, my parent, my mother passed away.
And this all came to the building department's attention because of what happened?
One of my neighbors, I guess.
They never had a problem before.
No.
This is just recently.
And have you spoken with the owners of the other property?
The one that, um, I don't know who owns the house, it's, I don't know if it's his son who owns it and bought it for his parents, or if the parents own it, but, um, I spoke to the father and he said he didn't have an issue with the pool and the deck.
Any color, you want anything else you want to share with us?
Yeah, I mean, all my neighbors have been, you know, at my house, in the pool and the deck, even the, them.
Was there, is there any record of the deck, a permit for the deck?
Are you asking Stacy?
Stacey? Is there any permit in the file for the deck?
The deck, uh, from what we have in the file, it appears the deck's been extended. So if you look at the pictures, you can pretty much see where the original deck was, at the end of the thing.
Is that this?
To where the canopy comes to the end, it appears that the deck has been extended
Okay.
from our profile that we have on our end. Without the connection.
Okay, so the deck went to that canopy and, was the deck conforming prior to the extension?
I don't know. I was not there prior to the extension.
Right, but right now, I've, yeah, I got two, two separate drawings, this drawing shows twenty-six and a quarter feet.
Yeah.
So this would have had to been a twenty-four foot extension in order for the deck to have been exist, um, in compliance with zone nine.
Depends on how the deck was built, on when the house was built, it was only built in nineteen seventy-six.
You know when the house was built?
It was built in nineteen eighty, I believe, and I have, this is the plans for the house. And what happened, I gathered- This, this was the plans for the house.
Right, I just wanna make sure that this-
But the, the builder did not put the house where he-
Right.
-had the plan.
These are the same.
And then this is the survey that my parents had done in nineteen ninety-four.
We're just showing you that. I'm sorry, did you say the builder did not put the house where the plans show?
No.
Was there an explanation of that?
I don't know, I, that was built in nineteen eighty or nineteen eighty-
Alright, so when the house was built in nineteen eighty-
So it looks like the deck stopped there.
With the plans that are in the file. Does it state how far from the rear of the deck to the rear property line, the distance is? Okay. But the deck was built after nineteen seventy-six, the house was built in nineteen eighty.
So it should have conformed.
So it should have conformed. And they got a C O for the deck?
They got a C O for the house.
With, with the deck?
It appears. The records are somewhat vague at that time.
Okay. Anything else we could do to find out more information? Can I, can I just do it from there?
I can, I can send Helen on a hunt, but I don't know, I don't know if she'll find any more. See, if you look at this, it would definitely look out for it. Deck is thirty feet long, yeah.
I believe twenty-eight.
Shows twenty-eight, but the, the pool goes out thirty feet.
Twenty-six, nine is actually what you have here.
That's, I don't know.
Typically these decks are ten by ten decks, you know, um, twelve by twelve, ten by ten, twelve by twelve. I mean, it's evident that there was an addition to put on the deck.
Yeah, I saw that too. I was just curious what was in the file leading up to that. And was there a permit for the pool?
No. No permit for the pool.
And do you know where the pool was put in?
As far as I can remember, it was there probably since nineteen ninety something, ninety-four.
Was the deck built specifically for the pool?
Specifically for the pool?
Yeah, I mean, it's a raised pool and the deck goes up to it and you, you know, that was sort of my assumption that that's what it was about. But I was wondering if you could, you know, verify that or refute it.
Yes.
There was a pool there in nineteen ninety-four, this pool that's there was not there in nineteen ninety-four, right?
Well, that same pool was not-
And you don't know when the new pool was installed?
There was, I put a new liner in.
Not the actual pool though?
No.
It looks in pretty good shape, I don't think it's twenty years old, so.
No, I think it was, the new pool was put in maybe a year. But I didn't know that you needed a permit.
I understand.
Because there was already a pool there.
So you replaced the pool last year?
Yes.
Stacy, have you been able to see it?
I have.
Thoughts, questions, comments?
There is no other place to put a pool. The pool is far enough away from the house to need to build into a standard.
Thought it needs to be ten feet.
That's the only clue.
Oh, good, got it.
Okay, so I don't really have a problem with the distance the pool is from the house.
You do not?
No. You know, she's got fairly decent distances to the property lines, so I really don't have an issue with the distance to the pro, to the side lot line.
The sideline.
The side lot line. And this diagram here doesn't really depict, um, twenty-six, thirty-four. So she might have just twenty feet to the rear line. The code says, there is an accessory district accessory uses not enclosed in building, including swimming pools and tennis courts, shall be erected all in the same way as the principal structure, may not be constructed in the side or front yards of such lot, and shall be a distance not less than twenty feet from any lot line. So it shall be a distance not less than twenty feet from any lot line, so it looks like she's got that twenty feet.
Put in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then it's an issue beyond the issue, the issue with the deck.
Well, the pool was too close to the house, so that's why.
Yeah, the distance from the house.
Okay, 'cause there's more or less than ten feet from the principal structure.
Is there any safety issue with having a pool that close?
To the house?
Yeah.
No.
Why would the code want it to be?
I don't know.
My guess would be if there was second story windows and people jumping out into the pool, just saying.
I, I don't know why they would put it in there.
You don't, okay. But no safety issue, you know, as far as, I don't know.
I mean, no, she's, she will, you know, have a, or does have a, an alarm, which will meet all the required standards as far as the building for, for pools and for decks.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So that, that issue, you know,
Okay.
Any, anything that needs to be taken care of, we're taking care of during the permitting process. So that I don't see as an issue.
So we're really only talking about the distance from the pool to the house?
Well, the, the deck doesn't meet the required setback. And, and, you know, Joe, we were discussing earlier, it says-
I'm sorry, the, the deck, uh, seems to be-
She's fifty feet. She's over there for an alarm.
Oh, oh, for the deck, uh, this is not a pool.
Well, the problem what I have with the code, it says shall not be good-
It shall be distant-
Shall be distant, not less than twenty feet. It doesn't say that if there's a fifty foot setback requirement, it can be only twenty feet from the rear line. It says it shall not be-
Less.
Less.
Yeah, but it's talking about accessory uses. Not attached to principal buildings. It would seem to suggest that they're envisioning a difference between swimming pools, tennis courts, and principal structures. But there's a separate section of the shed. Right? Isn't it? In a different case.
Well, it's an accessory building, but the shed is not typically attached to the primary building, right?
No, it's, mm.
Well, except to the extent that it's gonna hit the house, right?
Do you know when your parents bought the house?
Uh, nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
Now, th- is there any exception because it's a flag lot?
No. Because, why?
It's a flag lot, my property.
Oh, the flag lot.
Yeah.
Do you have a self-closing gate on your deck?
No, not now.
She got one.
So any open or enclosed porch or carport shall be considered a part of the building termination of the side or yard lot. So that's what sheds, that's what the deck would be part of the house. But it probably, but must, but it got C O, you know, it was originally built, and it wasn't fifty feet. I mean, certainly it's an issue that is on the board of the field, can and they should take into account. The, the owner got a C O for the deck, and it wasn't fifty feet.
The only deck that would have fit was a three foot deck.
It was maybe a three foot deck, and that's not what got smooth. Doesn't mean, that, that doesn't mean that the town is bound by that, correct, or somebody made a mistake, but something the board can take into account.
Did the code ever change, or is it always been that?
I don't, I don't recall that it changed. And, but do we re, do we require fifty feet from the rear line for the shed?
I do.
Unless it's an undersized lot, which is-
Unless it's an undersized lot.
Which is his house.
Correct. But the problem with that is the, is the total of the lot too, as you can see in the pictures, the hu, the house was set far back.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, and then the lot just dies off on the rear, I mean, just-
Yeah.
But, but the shed would be an accessory use enclosed in the building.
That's true.
Right?
That's true.
As opposed to accessory use, not enclosed in the building, like the swimming pool and the basketball. So, uh, uh, enclosure for your dog, it depends if it enclose or not enclosure for your dog, accessory use not enclosed in the building, would, would have to be distant, not less than twenty feet. Right? Or not closer than twenty feet if like lots.
Okay, if you want to put that one.
I mean, things not enclosed in the building.
A use not closed in the building, yes, it says a use not closed in the building.
Right, so I'll make a swimming pool.
That's small court, tennis court, swimming pool, but it's open air.
Yeah.
Well, we're on the- So that's what I say, if there's twenty feet from the rear lot line on the pool, then the issue may be now the deck being too close to the rear line and the pool being too close to the house.
Yeah. So you see that as the only issue that, that we should be dealing with?
Well, I think you're gonna wind up being closer than twenty foot, right here. I mean, it'd be nice to know what that dimension is.
It would be helpful to know, see what Mr. Brooks wanted to do.
Mm, yeah.
This dimension.
Yeah.
The one at right angles to the line.
And that's just, um, this isn't, this is just what I, like, came up with.
You mean you drew that?
Yes, I mean, I didn't have a, a surveyor come in.
You did the measurements?
Mm-hmm, the best I could.
And, and you drew this?
I had somebody help me, but-
But you did it, it was still-
Did they, did they dimension those things from the survey, is that coming back to the differences?
Yes, I, it says one inch or thirty feet, I believe. So that's what we went by.
It may be someplace else on the large survey.
Yeah, I don't think I have that one listening, I don't know.
But the one, the one you pulled out before.
This one?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's the-
Joe has, she put that before.
This was the plan, and this one is different.
Oh, that, that they did not follow.
Right.
That's another thing.
There is something. I can't, I can't see through us. It may, it may be. Yeah, the, the, the scale on this may be different than the scale on this. Which can be, somebody duplicating may have used a different scale. It might be helpful to apply it on the survey, using the survey scale.
Okay.
Can that somebody help you again?
Yes.
I guess.
Only it, it just looks to be, well.
I know this was one, one inch was thirty feet.
Yeah, I think it was twenty feet.
Thirty.
Thirty on the survey. The plans, they use twenty.
Which is why the well is over there now.
Now, whether they, this is a scale, this house here is not where this house is. That's just a-
Yeah, it looks like it's to the same, to the same scale, so assuming that these dimensions are right, that may just be, I don't know, to see where they're really situated.
The scale is the best.
Uh, well, the, the, the scale all-
I think it's a point four.
I can't relate to it.
Point four, I mean.
So it's just a-
It should be in the, in the, in the, in the sixes. We don't have the rule in here.
No.
Well, if between now, we, we do have to do a setup public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe between now and the public hearing, we can, whoever helps you can do this map, it seems to be pretty close, you could bet that distance.
Yeah, or maybe working with Stacy, they, she might actually be able to plot that distance and then be a little more accurate. If it does require a variance,
It'll be probably feet.
It might only be a foot or two, which would make the difference.
So if you're looking at a variance for maybe a foot or two on the pool.
On the rear line, how, how far is it from now?
Five.
And that's supposed to be ten, but that's,
I mean, I measured it.
It's two building standard map.
Yeah.
Then in the last is the deck, which is supposed to be fifty feet, which at its shortest distance looks like it's twenty-six feet. But a C O was granted for the house, even though the original deck appears to have not been too close.
Let me just- Let me just verify something, as I recall when I was there, round slopes off, if I, if I stand on the deck, round slopes, slopes, it's like a, a field, grassy field. I didn't, uh, see any house, other house back there, and I'm sure that that's, I know that's not all your property, so it's somebody else's property. But there's no visible house back there, is there, or is there, am I right, Rob?
No, there is.
It's visible, but it's-
There's a house that goes straight back, it's a wooden house that has a view, it faces west.
It's way back.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, but, but, yeah, yeah, but wait, yeah, right.
There's these houses here and there's a house over here.
Yes, right. Over there, that was sort of in the wood.
That new, um, woody kinda.
Yeah.
Is the next house, and that's Annette Don here and Pauline Williams.
Yeah. Who wrote the letter that she had no objection to this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that, that other- Yeah, and then that, that other driveway that's just to the east of Mr. Purdy's driveway goes all the way back and winds a little bit and then goes to the house, which is right behind, right at the base of Dogwood Hollow Road, actually.
Yeah, right, right. Oh, is it?
It's that far back, yeah.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah, right, right, as a matter of fact. Well, while we get some of these things, we're, you know, you'll, you'll come on, we get some of these issues worked out, and I thought we suggested you do, um, but shall we set a date for the public hearing for the Purdy?
And I want, I'll come out and take another look as well.
Yes, yes, I will too, yeah.
Now, you know your, the five questions that you're gonna make your answer next week, did you review those?
Next one. On the application.
They're, they're on the application.
Right, I'm focused on them.
Yeah.
So that will be a hearing?
Page, page, page three, that, that'll be the public hearing, the public will be invited to speak, um, you might want to invite your neighbors who are immediately affected by this, and, um, it would be, you know, all of them.
Yeah.
Public hearing. Yes.
And, uh, see what they have to say, we'll see, we'll listen to them and, and we'll, you know, go over this again.
You're gonna have to notify all the neighbors.
Yes, yes, um.
Just to see.
Yeah, Kelly will, will, will tell you how to do that, and she will give you a, a list of, um, the, the, you know, the neighbors that need to be notified. But I'll entertain a motion right now that we set the date for the public hearing at our November meeting, which Kelly, is what date for November? We don't know, okay, the se- we'll just say the second Tuesday in.
January fourth should be the eleventh.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
It should be.
Is that Veterans' Day, is that, that's Veterans' Day.
Oh, if it's be-
Well, it's the November meeting, we all have a meeting on that.
If it's Veterans' Day, do we have it, have a meeting?
It is, we have it on Wednesday.
The eleventh is Veterans' Day, that is the second Tuesday, so the meeting would be on the Wednesday?
Wednesday the twelfth.
Wednesday the twelfth, Ed, could you make that on Wednesday?
Sure, I can.
Gail?
Yes.
I could as well, okay, um.
Okay.
It's been on the calendar like that for a year now, so.
So it's Wednesday.
Yeah.
Probably.
Okay.
Kelly, uh, she was asking, will it be here, do we know now that it will be here, it'll be in this one?
Okay, I will then entertain a motion that we set the Purdy's public hearing for Wednesday, November twelfth, moved by Ed, seconded by.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
Should I do what needs to be done to conform with codes as far as safety, or should I wait in case I have to take my pool down?
Wow.
You have an application in front of us. You wait until your application, but, but.
Does that, what, do you know what needs to be done in terms of safety?
No, as far as, are you talking about like the fence or gate or something like that?
Um, what, you say they're gang gate and.
Like a fence or the gate, and that's needed.
You're gonna, you're gonna close your pool, you're gonna cover your pool, and you're closing pool, and once your pool is closed, you will not need a gate or a fence.
Oh, because it covers it long?
Because the cover, it's covered.
Right.
And the cover's not coming down.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. See you November. Is this yours?
Yes.
No.
Oh, okay.
It's in the morning. Excuse me, the microphone.
But no. Okay, okay, I just lost my agenda, here we are. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have, uh, Rainbow Pools Rosa, now, you're, Mr. Rosa, is that the idea, or you're Mr. Pools?
No, Mr. Rosa, he's not here, I'm Mr. Pools.
He called me, he had a family emergency, he could not make it today, he wanted to let us know.
Oh. Good, good, okay. I have a question about this, I know where Woodstock Lane is because I went out there, but I was reluctant to drive out on down the property, I didn't know how many houses are on Woodstock Lane, is it only one?
Just one.
Just the one, there, so, okay, so, uh, please tell the, inform.
Did either of you get a chance to go out there?
No.
I'm sorry?
I just wonder if you didn't mind if you went out there, because I, I did.
I went out, but I didn't, I didn't visit the property, because I, I just was reluctant, informed the owner that we will be going out, that he's gonna have people coming to his property, you know, to take a look at it, okay. I, because I was going out there, unfortunately I left my application in my car.
Oh.
The old shared deals, and this is the application, well, why don't you summarize it, you tell us what's, what's going on here?
Basically, on the survey, I'm sorry, on the survey here, and I actually, pictures for everyone, know you were out there, I believe. As the survey shows, this driveway is roughly twelve hundred feet long through, from Woodstock Lane, from Craig's Wood, so this is Craig's Wood Road down here, okay, this, this is how the house sits on this picture. So according to the house facing Craig's Wood Road and the, the driveway being Woodstock Lane coming off of Craig's Wood, where the actual drive is, is the back of the house.
So you don't consider Woodstock Lane to be the driveway?
I do, but I'm building a pool, so.
Yes, that is the driveway.
Thank you, okay, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It's not a road or a lane, it's really a driveway that was made with.
Yeah, with the name.
Yes.
And they own all of the property alone, that driveway.
Yes.
To this.
Well, they actually own this property too, but it's a separate lot, so it's.
I see, so basically, I.
Well, the interesting thing is, this is Craig's Wood.
Yeah.
You come in the driveway, and this technically is where you come in, it's in the front of the house.
Got it, so basically it makes it a flag lot.
Hmm.
It is a flag lot.
Yes, yeah, okay.
I don't, you know, I don't know that that's relevant, but it's, I, I just, um, you know, it's a unusual kind of setup, okay.
Well.
And his address, um, is on, is Woodlot Lane, uh, you know, that's, that's his, uh, that's the address that was put on the application.
That's the legal address.
It is, huh?
Yeah, I think it's sixteen Woodstock Lane.
Sixteen Woodstock Lane.
There wa- there was a previous house there before they had caught fire.
Mm-hmm.
It was owned by the Zerelis.
Yeah, I remember that, right, right, right.
And they had named that.
The Zereli house, right.
The Zereli home, and they had named that driveway, sixteen Woodstock Lane, which was kept by the new owner who bought this property.
But, but Zereli is not, um, he, he, his house is not considered to be on, on Woodstock Lane?
Yeah, this house was, right, this was his original carriage house, his garage, and his house was right up front here, that burnt down, so they, they bulldozed it, and then we, I'm the builder, we built the new home over here, next to the garage.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. For, for Rosa?
For the Roses, yes.
Yeah, um, and Zereli is, his house is over in this piece of property?
No, it's, it's over, it's over here.
Okay.
It's all the way over closer to, uh, Springtown Road.
Stace?
Right.
I know we always go over this, front yard and rear yard.
Yeah.
This, this is not a corner lot, those don't apply.
Uh-huh. Okay.
The front lot line is the lot line that's parallel to the road.
And which road would that be, Stacy, that, that Woodstock or the?
The Craggs, Woodstock Lane is a private driveway.
Okay, so.
This line is parallel lines to Craig's Wood.
Craig's Wood. Craig's Wood, which is, yeah.
Then because up here you have your fifty-foot, your little fifty-foot line here, and you have your front here, this is a sideline, sideline, this is a sideline, this would be a rear line.
Yeah. Okay.
So, as a builder, or as, as the gentleman looking to install the pool, if this was all to code, where would you put the pool?
Right here.
To code.
Yeah, I mean, if it was to code, well, this is where they, this is where they wanna put the pool.
I understand that, but I, knowing that this is the garage.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And to code, it would have to be.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, to code, I see what you're saying, yes.
Back there.
So I'm saying, where, where would you feasibly put it?
Well, you'd have to put it, I mean feasibly, you'd have to put it on the other side of the driveway, right.
Uh, you know, it's a big piece of property, why are you not putting it back there?
Because it's on the other side of the driveway, instead of right off the house.
It's in the front of the house.
Right.
It's what?
It's in the front of the house.
No, this is the front of the house.
Legally, that's the front of the house.
That's the yard.
Right, that's the front yard, this is the front of the house here, this is the front of the house, this is the garage.
Yard.
Yeah, that's the front of the house.
You mean, you, you consider, you consider it the front of the house, but the legal front of the house is over here, yeah, I have the same situation.
If you drove down, if you drove down this road or this private lane and sat there, and after an hour somebody asked you, where's the front of the house?
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
I was very, very confused.
I'm pretty sure you would not say Craig's Wood.
I would, and I'll tell you why, because I have a similar situation with my house, so I'm very aware of that kind of thing, you know, and I know what, what you mean, it doesn't look like the front, but, yeah, okay. I'll get out there and take a good look at it too.
So this is the space right here, is that just cleared brush, is, is there anything else there?
No, I don't think, it's pretty much a field.
There is, in the back, let's see, northeast corner, there are some wetlands.
That's over here, so, so would that be to the east of the garage?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And I say map, I'm gonna say, clarify and say map whatever else.
Say.
Map wetlands, so I, yeah, I did walk out there.
Map, yeah.
So this is Nora.
They're showing a map.
Okay, but you, you don't see the pool as intruding into the wetlands as, as it's planned, or do you, or, or does it have to be checked out?
I think you need to go look at it.
Okay, got it.
George, if you had to draw the lot, right, this is the, what does twenty acres look like on here, right, because this isn't part of the parcel, is it?
No.
Nope.
So it would be like that. Unless it would probably cut across like this.
It's exactly to hit here.
So it goes like this, right.
What do you, I'm sorry, I, I missed the lady.
I'm, I'm asking.
Where the lot line would be.
For, to this lot line here.
Right, because it's a flag lot, so it would come up through here and go across there.
Uh-huh, yeah. Okay.
And do you have any idea what the distance is from where the pool is going to be to this lot line, is that say four hundred eighty feet?
Tom, I think it's four hundred eighty feet.
It'd be four hundred eighty feet.
We don't have any problem with setbacks, here. Not gonna be.
Depends on where you wanna put it.
There's no, there's no precedent if the address is physically sixteen Woodstock Lane, yeah.
So that's about what the lot looks like.
Where, where the pool is being proposed, how much, uh, you have to take down any trees, move a lot of earth, it's pretty level.
We have to take down one decked, which is in the middle of the lot, yeah.
One decked. And you'll see out here, you know, the, I notice the exit into the front yard with the rear of the house, there's a nice patio and everything right here, really should go out and see it, which I know.
Uh, I'll get out there.
That's, it's gonna be a twenty by forty?
Eighteen by forty-two now, depending on.
And the setback from the garage? The distance from the garage to the pool?
More than ten feet, like forty feet? Yeah, it's gotta be forty, fifty feet.
What, what does, Joe, what does the distance from the garage need to be from the pool? Twelve feet, that's it, okay.
So the only issue is the fact that it's in the side yard.
Side yard.
Any, i- is it all, doesn't, I, I can't imagine would be, but is it at all visible, would it be at all, all visible to the neighbors?
No.
You get a letter from Zereli and any other neighbors that are around saying that there would be no objection?
Yeah, I mean, Zereli sold him the lot, is, they sold him the parcel, and their house is quite a distance away.
Well, well, yeah. Yes.
You can't see anything when you're, yeah.
Their house shows on this, their house is a lighthouse up here.
Okay. Wait a second, the light gets oriented here, okay.
This is, this is Zereli, up by Craig's Wood Road.
But. Okay. How much property is there here?
I wanna say seventeen, but don't quote me.
Twenty is twenty six on that.
That's twenty, it's twenty acres, and then plus he owns the, I think fifteen acres next to it, so it's about thirty-five acres there.
Twenty, just twenty.
But this lot that we're dealing with is twenty, okay.
It's twenty, twenty, yeah.
Okay, ready to set the public hearing?
Yep.
Um, then I'll entertain a motion that we set the public hearing for, what do we refer to this as?
November twelfth.
Wednesday, November twelfth.
This is the, who is this?
Rainbow.
The Rosa property for November twelfth.
Sounds very pretty.
So moved.
And, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you then, folks.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Good night.
And you know about seeing Kelly about getting, you know, the notices for the neighbors?
You know, the notices for the neighbors and signage and.
Yep. You're in charge, Rainbow Mike.
Yeah, Mr. Pools.
Mr. Shallow.
Okay. You folks are speaking for Mr. Shallow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, you were Mr. Shallow, just the junior version.
Not the, not the Mr. Shallow I know, no, and you are.
No, that's the junior, I'm his sister, Christina Towesley.
This is my sister.
Which, which one's sister?
This one here, yeah.
My sister, yeah.
They run the show now.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're both Shallows, I mean, I don't.
Technically, yes.
Right, both Shallows, okay.
We consider ourselves like the operational owners.
Are you on site and, and you, uh?
Yeah, we're the two that are primarily on site, my parents are kinda in the retirement ages, so, after thirty years, they deserve it.
Yeah. So would you like to summarize what you hear about, what kind of variance you want, and what's going on here?
We're seeking both a height variance and an area variance for our signage, um, we recently changed brands as of September thirteenth, and, uh, since we had changed brands, we, uh, we have two signs, we have one wall sign which complies to the law. Just in reference to meeting with you guys is our pole sign, the current sign law, uh, states that you can only go twelve feet high, and that you can have an area of fourteen square feet, um, and if that were to be both sides, then it would be seven square feet on each side for a total. Um, the purpose of our pole sign is primarily just to, uh, have traffic that is traveling both east and west, uh, on Route two ninety-nine, those coming off of the New York State thruway, so that way they know where we are, since we sink, or sit down in a, a little hole there. Um, as well as the traffic that comes from Allenville and Route seventeen over the mountain, a lot of people take the scenic ride, and, um, that way they can view us from that direction as well.
There is, uh, empty sign scaffolding on, um, what is it, South, South what?
The corner there, yes, that's correct.
On the corner, do you plan to use that for anything?
As of right now, no, we, uh, we have thought of some type of use there, but, um, as of right now, I, we believe that it doesn't even comply with the, the zoning laws, because it is higher than twelve feet, the square footage would be wider than fourteen square feet, and, uh, there's also a ground lit light there that we don't even believe is on our property. So whenever that was put in, and I haven't. So whenever that was put in, and I haven't really looked into what had happened, that was when, uh, they had owned Blue Jean Steakhouse years ago, and they had the Blue Jean Steakhouse sign up there.
Yes, yes.
And I don't know what the other businesses have gone and done, or if they've gotten okay's or approvals since then, or anything of that nature either. I don't have any paperwork on it myself.
I, I will tell you that, uh, your considered use of that sign would affect my determination on the variance for this one.
Okay.
So, you know, make up your mind, and don't say as of right now, okay?
Oh, yeah, we have no intentions on using it. The only way that we would ever intend to use it is if we could have somebody else go and use it, perhaps, another business, because we're only permitted two anyway.
Well, it's very ugly right now, so would you take down the scaffolding, the other scaffolding?
I have no problem going and doing it, sure.
Yeah. Uh, I've looked at this from, you know, all directions, that sign would be blue, I assume the colors are true.
Yep, the colors are what the banners are currently.
Yeah.
It, uh, it's just that it would change in the, uh, the vertical to more horizontal, and it's reduced in size. It won't be as big as the Super eight.
The Super eight is how many square, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead, Ed.
This Super eight sign is how many square feet would it be?
Um, I have that on my notes here. It's over a hundred square feet in total, I know that.
And the new sign's gonna go to?
Uh.
Thirty-five, oh, that's thirty-five.
That's eight by five.
Eighty?
Yeah.
Both sides included?
Yep.
Twenty-eight square foot smaller than the current Super eight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Factoring percentage is about twenty-six percent less than area size when factored in both size, sides. And the height would be reduced about thirteen percent, since the sign is shorter.
So the pole doesn't get reduced at all?
No, the pole.
I find the pole, I have to tell you personally, I find the pole very offensive. Um, I've looked at this sign, you know, from both directions. The Super eight sign, especially the fact that it's yellow and glaring, is, uh, certainly less desirable than, than the blue. But if you would even consider lowering that, that, uh, pole, uh, another two feet, um, I would be happier personally.
Okay, um, I, I'd have to look into seeing if they can go and do that.
Please do, do, yeah.
Just because it could affect the structural support of it.
Yes.
Unless I replace the entire pole. Um, the idea was we were gonna just sand it and paint it, since we were reducing it. I'd also like to, uh, s- I'd have to actually see visually what it would go and do by the visual specs, maybe the sign company can go and do it, which is rather difficult, because, um, if we are dealing with a fence that goes over the overpass and the concrete wall to protect pedestrians from falling off that sidewalk, um, it could drop us below the railing, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the view.
I, I.
I don't think so.
I hadn't thought so, every time I went by, and I walked it, you know, and, and drove it and everything, I hadn't thought so, but, but, you know, yes.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Where is this, the view?
Yeah, that's the fence line.
That is low.
Looking east?
Yes, that's, if you're standing on the New Falls Village side, looking towards the New York State thruway.
Mm-hmm.
And these are all your trees?
Uh, the state had planted them years ago. Uh, my father was concerned with noise, um, and privacy of guests, if they have their curtains open or anything like that, so they planted pines. They had some other pines there, but they died, because when they would shovel off the sidewalk with all the salt and sand with their little bobcat, they killed the trees, because they planted them too close to the wall.
So, I mean, it looks like your sign, over time, may be swallowed up by.
And it will be, because we, we just trimmed those last year, the tops of them, if you were to walk on the sidewalk, you would still see where they were trimmed back, so that way the sign would still be visible.
So you, you plan to continue to trim the trees to keep the sign visi- visible?
We'd like to, yeah. There's only so much that you can trim, because then you're jeopardizing the health of them.
Yeah, right.
If you, if you took a look right now, they don't seem all that healthy, but they're still living, fortunately for us.
I don't, I don't think they were so bad.
So the new sign, or the old sign was this high?
Yes.
The new sign is gonna be how much shorter?
Uh, I believe it's four feet exactly. I, when I overlooked that, it said approximately five, it's actually four feet less in height.
From the top here to the new sign, it's gonna be four feet shorter.
Yes.
All right, so you asked them for two feet, so it's actually.
Well, yeah, yeah, uh, but they have, I assume that they, the wrap that you have around this sign.
Yeah, they just have it screwed in.
But I assume that that was going to be the height of the, oh, okay, all right.
No. No, that's just the temper, if, if we had not covered the sign, you would see the yellow glaring, and you can still see the half moons right now, and.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wish that I didn't even have the Super eight sign behind it, it's just unfortunately, if I had them cut that screen out, it'd be like two bright spotlights shining on the highway, so I needed to keep the screen in. If it, yeah, if they, if they took and removed it, then it would have been an issue.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and that would, you know, that would certainly help. You, did you mention that you were going to paint the pole?
Yes, we need to sand that and paint it, it's not in the best condition for, uh.
It is not, what color would you paint it?
Yeah, it's a peel, just black.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, the, uh, America's Best Value Win recommends blue, but blue kinda stands out, especially when you're wrapped in all the green, it's this, doesn't really go with everything, the black at least gets covered in the shadows and stuff, so.
How ca- uh, this is kind of irrelevant to the sign, how come you, uh, changed from a Super eight to whatever we are now?
America's Best Value Win.
America's Best Value Win, which I had never heard of, by the way, but that, you know.
Yeah, it's becoming more and more popular, um, you know, it's funny, my father was initially concerned with that, too, and, uh, I just got married this past year, and we were going through some photos and stuff, and, uh, we came across an article, when he built Super eight, there was three hundred and sixty-four in the entire country, uh, with this particular brand, there's eleven hundred in the country, so it's a little bit of a change for him.
Already, yeah.
But, uh, the, the primary reasons why we had ended up going and changing was, uh, contract agreements, uh, Super eight was looking for a twenty-year contract. The business model is kind of an old-fashioned business model, it, uh, when they first developed in nineteen seventy-four, uh, they had a great business plan, it was very successful. They didn't expect what the internet was going to do to the industry with Expedia and Travelocity. All those revenues that they would acquire from people booking through a Super eight one eight hundred number, or even a supereight.com website that was popular in the nineties, um, their revenue started to shrink, because they couldn't acquire the, the commissions as once before. So, uh, with all these other fees, they decided to go and increase your fees, your royalty fees, your marketing fees and everything, and they start to throw it onto the franchisee, unfortunately. And, uh, so America's Best Value Win is a little bit different, their fee structure's different, uh, they developed in nineteen ninety-nine, and, uh, under the development, they knew what the internet was bringing in nineteen ninety-nine. They, they saw where it was going, they developed their fee structure to comply with what, uh, a, an owner would want, um, especially when you still want a flag that's recognizable to people that are all across the entire country. A hotel's a little bit different than a, uh, pizzeria, let's say, just primarily, because if you go out of town, a lot of times, somebody would prefer to stay with a chain, where they know what to expect around the board.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
A pizzeria, they just want the best slice in town, so it's a little bit different. Um, but that's just a couple of the, the number of reasons why we ended up going and changing.
And when, when you and I were talking, if America's Best had the same exact sign, the same exact layout, you would still have to be here for a variance.
That's correct, yes, it, uh, I, Stacy had mentioned, one of the considerations that we were, hadn't thought about was to just insert a new screen. They were going to restructure the sign, take the half moon out at the top and the bottom, and then put a screen in, and then you would see kind of what the banner has. Stacy had mentioned that even if we were to go and do that, that we would still need a sign variance for it. So at that point, we're like, hey, let's put the money into it, get a new cabinet, and actually make it conform to be more looking like the America's Best Value Win sign, which is more horizontal than vertical.
Yeah.
And, uh, it'll look like all the rest, so.
And board, just so you know, the twelve, fourteen feet, um, for a pole sign, um, gets measured from, because he's down the hole.
Yeah.
That gets measured from the road, the, the level of the road up.
The road level.
Okay.
Got it. So that sort of has to be, I mean, for me visually, yes, we project it out, um, from, from when I stand at the road, you know, to go out. And I assume that there's some technical way that you could do that, that's, or somebody could do it.
No, there's, it could be a technical way that his sign people could show that, okay?
I see, yeah.
But, um, 'cause he doesn't actually give us a height, he doesn't give us a height from the road.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm pretty sure we've discussed, you know, that height from the road, I mean, he doesn't give us a height from the road here. Okay, so if he gave us height from the road.
Yes.
To fourteen feet, and then to where he's proposing, okay, that's gonna tell us what percentage of variance is gonna be required.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, would you do that when we have the public hearing bring that to us, because, because, yes, we would need that.
Would, uh, out of curiosity, would it still stand for the road when you have the concrete wall there obstructing it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just another part to your case.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Thanks, Stacy, that's helpful, because that's, that's helpful.
I don't have any other questions. I can make a motion if you'd like.
Let's do that.
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for Shallow, America's Best Value Win, for Wednesday, November twelfth.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we will see you folks then. And, you know, a lot of the points that have been raised, if, if you can, you know, satisfy us with those, uh, that will be actually essential, yeah.
And, um, you know, the only thing that I have a question in regards is.
Yes, certainly.
Um, like, would the sign company going and doing the visual specs, like, uh, I don't know how to truly rely on it, like, from the road level. I mean, maybe the, I guess because I've never done it myself, but they have their ways of going and doing that?
Your sign company should be able to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would hope so.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, get in there, the sign company.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've never done it myself, so.
No, no, of course not, that's not your own business.
That works.
Okay, thanks, folks. Okay. I wanted to ask Mike if he would like to join us, just as a courtesy, Mike, Mike Calamano was here. Did you notice him come in? Well, we did, and.
If you'd like to join us up here?
If you'd like to join us, yes. Okay. Now, where is this, this is this?
Be wired on it.
Please do have a seat. I see that Mr. Calamano, the chair of the, uh, planning board, excuse me, Mr. Calamano is in the audience, and I wondered if you would like to join us at the table to listen from up here.
Anyway.
How would you feel if we had questions and asked you questions?
No, I'm just gonna listen.
Oh, you're just going to listen, that's fine.
Yeah.
Afterwards.
Right.
Got it. Yeah, right, so, and for those of you who don't know him, I don't, can't imagine there's anyone here, this is Mike Calamano, chair of the New Falls Planning Board. And you folks, if you would, uh, introduce yourselves.
Sure, uh, my name's Charlie Vizdlo, I'm, uh, outside counsel for Trance Hudson, uh, who is the, uh, applicant in the, uh, project. I have Ron Lazott from, uh, Maisur Engineering, who's the, uh, site plan engineers, and Gary McCoy, who's with, uh, the name I always say wrong.
Point, Point Outside Company.
Yeah, Point.
You folks have a lot of difficult pronunciation.
I know, really, yeah, yeah, I've thought about changing my name many times, I know, it's, yes, yes.
I mean, McCoy is okay, but, yeah.
But then you get the name of the company, yeah, exactly. Um, anyway, we were last week before, you were board, uh, way back in January of this year, uh, and, uh, we, the project has gotten some significant changes since then, but just to go over briefly what we're talking about. This is, uh, a lot on the corner of two ninety-nine and North Buck Corners Road, uh, we are proposing to construct a CBS, uh, pharmacy.
And, and, excuse me, just located, which corner is it on?
It is on the northeast corner. Northeast corner, yes, northeast corner of two ninety-nine. Basically, uh, we'll, we'll go into some detail about it, too, but, but basically, though you see two other pad sites shown on the site plan, they're just there for reference at this point, to show what else could possibly go on the site. The application before this board, before the planning board, is just for the CBS, uh, retail and pharmacy.
Right, originally it was a gas.
Originally, oh, yeah, even back in January, yes, yes, originally was a stop and shop gas station, was the back part, that, that is gone, that, 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 that is gone, we're talking about the CBS, uh, store at this point in time. We have, uh, as far as this board's jurisdiction, we have an application for two variances in front, in front of you.
You got yours open?
Well, one, one is for parking in the, uh, front yard, uh, setback, uh, and that, that immediately raises the issue that, uh, we're on a corner lot, so we're, we're privileged to have two front yards. Uh, we, we had a question about that originally, and that's a settled matter, we understand that, that, uh, we, so we have two front yards. Uh, and then the second, uh, variance would be for the total amount of signage associated with, 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 with the building. We were gonna discuss signs first, if that's okay, uh, if you wanted to start with the parking, we could start there.
Let's do signs, we, we're in a signage.
You just kinda sign kinda moved after the last one, okay, very good.
I was just saying, let's do parking.
All right, uh, the original application before this board, uh, we were proposing a total amount of signage of three hundred and twenty-one, twenty-five, eight square feet, and that was for building signs and for the, uh, I, I call it a pylon sign, but. Ladder sign, la- 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 ladder sign. Uh, that, that would have been a variance of a hundred and, uh, no, two hundred and seventy-one and change feet, big variance.
Yes.
Big, big, big variance, we, we understood the board did, did not like that, we got that, we got that. So, uh, we went back, uh, and reviewed that several times with, uh, with CBS, uh, who is the underlying tenant here. Uh, you know, and CBS as, as a national chain, you know, they, they have their, they have their requirements that they like to see in a store, uh, and it's, it's difficult to push them back, but, but we have pushed them back quite a bit, uh, on this. We're now, we're now down to a total sign package of a hundred and seven, uh, square, a hundred and seven point ten.
Hundred and seven?
Hundred and seven, one oh seven point ten square feet, uh, that would be a variance of fifty-seven point ten square feet. We are allowed fifty square feet by code, uh, the first thing I would say about that, and we'll go into some more details, about Gary will get some more details about that. But the first consideration, I think, for, for this board that's driven here, is that we are on a corner lot, and we have two, we have, we have two facades facing two different streets. The code in New Falls, like most codes, you know, don't necessarily account for that, uh, and many times when you end up with a corner development, you end up in front of a zoning board, like, like we're here, like we're here tonight. So, um, along, it, it's not just the signs we've reduced, we've also increased the, the, uh, pleasantness, shall we say, of the facade of the building and the look of the building. Uh, we, we've added architectural features to it, we've added landscaping, uh, to, 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 to the building, and that, that all kinda goes together with the sign package. And so, may, maybe with that, let Gary explain a little bit more, uh, about the signs and what's been done to, to the building, so.
Say though, you still have a, uh, flat roofed building.
We still have a flat roofed building, we have a flat roofed building, yes.
Let me just point, the applicant who was here before you is also on a corner.
Is also on a corner lot, is also on a corner lot, yes, yes.
Okay, Gary McCoy, Point Outside Company. Um, I do have the original drawing, so I just, I did bring this, just so you could see originally where we're at, and get an idea on how far we've come. Um, there've been multiple changes before we got to the, this package that we're doing, but, you know, originally, we had two sets to drive through on the building, uh, we had three sets of CBS pharmacy, and accommodations for future tenant on the pile on, so it was a much more significant sign package for the site. Uh, we had three sets of CBS pharmacy, um, and accommodations for future tenant on the pylon, so it was a much more significant sign package for the site. Really what we tried to do is, is, is get the brand visible from all approaches, okay, so I just wanted to show who started, um, and go through the package that we presented tonight.
Excuse me, just shift that second one for a moment, I wanna just take another look at the first, uh, okay, okay, thank you. Put it back.
So what we've, what we've done, uh, where we're at now, is, um, as was mentioned earlier, not only are we on a corner, but the, the CBS buildings, all their entrances are on the corner. Very rarely, unless you're in a mall situation or an inline store, you see the door to the pharmacy facing one street. The standalone buildings are all on the corner. So what we always wanna do for balance and visibility, and this is your point here, is to have the CBS brand on either side.
That's the two ninety-nine, and that's North Putt.
Yes, this is two ninety-nine, and this is North Putt. So we always wanna try to flank the entrance with the CBS brand. So we're proposing, uh, uh, two sets there, they're identical in size, obviously, and they're thirty-three point five oh square feet each, okay? Also, on Route two ninety-nine, um, at one point we had a sign that said, "Drive-thru Pharmacy." We dropped the word pharmacy and just put "drive-thru" there. And we're looking at that sign, in some ways it's almost directional, because you do have to get around to the back of the building. You do have to get traffic, so they can flow through the, uh, and get access to the drive-through window. So we thought of the drop the word pharmacy, because it's repetitive, we, we can still have the drive-thru pho-, uh, the drive-thru sign, um, in some cases as a, as, as a directional sign.
And what's the size of, of the drive-thru sign?
Uh, the drive-thru sign is thirteen square feet.
Oh, thank you, okay. There we go, got it, thank you.
Okay, um, so it is a significant change on that, I know the code allows, you know, thirty foot max on the, on the, on the building, but it also means two square feet for every linear foot, I mean, one square foot for every two of, of building facade. So I mean, if you didn't have that max of thirty feet, we'd be looking at a lot more signage on the building based on the way the code's written. So I always try to look at that part, that is part of the puzzle, that is part of the spec, but it does cap out at thirty. Pylon is, is, is situated in size according to the bylaw, so we're not seeking any rehooch on that.
Where's the pylon sign gonna be?
Pylon sign is, uh, at the, uh, is the westerly corner.
So each sign on the building is thirty-five square feet?
Yes, thirty-five.
And the pylon sign is square feet?
Twenty-one.
Way up there.
Why do you think you need a pylon sign, if you have a sign on both sides of the building?
Well, the, this whole site, I know they're doing some, some modifications to the, to the grade, uh, to bring it up somewhat. But this, in my opinion, is not really a great site, it's, you know, it's more, it's more, you know, they're doing signs to accommodate that.
Yeah.
The CBS brand signage on the building, again, is very important to CBS to have that at the entrances.
And, and the other thing about the pylon sign, it starts, we'll come back to, but starts to cross into the same reason about the parking. The, the building itself has to be set back pretty far in, into the site. There's a large right away on both two ninety-nine and the county road, so, so we, we end up with a building that's pretty far set, you know, pretty far set back from the road. And so, if, you know, yes, when everyone comes used to, used to the building being there, you'll know it's there, but someone who's new to the area or not familiar with where this site is, they're probably gonna see the pylon sign before they ever see the, the ladder sign. The ladder sign before you see the building.
Just for argument's sake, I think the only people who wouldn't know it was here would be the people coming into New Pauls from the thruway.
From the thruway.
And my guess would be that they would see the CBS on top of, because is this gonna be catty corner, or is it gonna be at a night?
You need to have, you, the, the pylons on.
Correct.
It will be perpendicular to, uh, two ninety.
So this way, or this way?
It'll be perpendicular to the street.
All right, so if it's this way, and you're coming in from two ninety-nine, you're not gonna see it anywhere. Unless I'm seeing it wrong.
Pylon is situated on this corner here, so.
Okay, so it's gonna be this way, you see it, okay, that's right.
Perpendicular to the street.
And when you come off the thruway, you'll, the first thing, you'll see the back of the building, there's no sign on the, the western.
Right, originally we had a sign back here, and we removed it, it was there for that purpose, to give people enough time to safely navigate, slow down, and, 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 and take the turn.
Have you compared your pylon sign plan to the signs in some of the other, um, you know, the, uh, commercial buildings in the area? For example, um, farther on down, the Shoprite sign, uh, the one at, um.
Cherry Hill Plaza?
Cherry Hill Plaza, yeah, if you compare them, um, you know, this seems like very high to me, you may notice that I'm not a big fan of, of signs.
And, and again, the sign, uh, it gets back to an issue similar to the last applicant too, that the sign height is measured from roadway, roadway level, and this is.
You haven't showed us that.
Thought we did.
Yeah, my, my question would be the pylons on, how high is it?
I don't have, anything that shows me that.
Okay.
We've got.
We regret that, Stacey, tremendously, yes, you asked it several times, and I, and every.
Yeah, fifteen feet from the ground, evidently, but where is the level of the road?
Right.
Twelve, twelve feet is what's allowed.
Yes, and it's, it's less than twelve feet from, from the road.
So, actually, on the site plan that you have, so the site plan that you have, the fish at grade is signed three ninety-six. The, and it is actually ten feet from the Route two ninety-nine area. So it's actually, it's identified on the site plan where it calls out the sign, the part of the package that was submitted.
And how high is the top of the building gonna be from Route two ninety-nine?
Uh, the top of the building is approximately twenty-two point four.
So the elevation is four oh two when it's gone to three ninety-six.
That would be.
Yeah, elevation, oh god.
There is a considerable, you know, grade differential, um, the building will still be a little bit higher than the sign, obviously, but like I said, the overall sign is about two feet.
Right, but the top of the CBS sign to the top of the building, that distance would be how much?
Oh, I have to try, I, I have to take a look at that for you, I can try to.
So you're saying the grade, the, the grade height where the sign is being placed is three hundred and ninety-six feet, is that correct?
Or be, yeah, approximately three ninety-six.
And the, the elevation of the existing Route two ninety-nine is four oh two?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's eight feet lower than the road.
Than the road area.
Elevation, okay.
So I did look at some of the other signs in the area, um, I took some photographs that I could pass out, and the, the most important one to us of the pharmacy is the Rite Aid sign. And that sign's forty-eight square feet, three foot high by twenty-eight feet wide, so I measured these myself, so I'm not sure if they're in the same zone as us, or what ha, what have you, but, um, those signs are significantly bigger than what we're asking for. And then I also looked at the Midas, uh, the pylon sign looks like it's co-compliant, but they've got two signs on the building, and, um.
They're not compliant.
They're not compliant? Okay, well, they're across the street, so, um. So as far as looking at whatever other things that are in the area, I did take a look at that. Most importantly, like I said, would be the competition of Rite Aid.
And the Stop and Shop sign, did you measure?
I looked at that, I did, I, I'm not sure how relevant that is, because I think that's in a shopping center, so it might fall under something different, but that, uh, that, those letters are easily four feet, three to four feet high.
Yes, they're in a shopping center, they're under different regulations as well as Rite Aid.
Rite Aid is as well, okay.
Yeah, Rite Aid is a shopping center as well, do you mean the shopping center?
And then a shopping center, they're permitted to have eighty square feet.
So eighty square feet.
On a wall sign.
And that's, you said, was about forty-eight, so they're, they're well within compliance.
So. You know, I, I don't know how you're looking at this, I mean, right now, you know, these are highway business districts, it's one store. There's future potential development, I don't know, how are you gonna look at it?
Does the signage go with the property, total signage for the total property?
If it's classified, if, if it, if it's classified as a shopping center, if it's not, okay, he would be, they would be, they would, they would be allowed to have eighty square feet on their building. Each store would be allowed to have eighty square foot on their building, which would be a max, okay? It's one square foot per one linear foot, okay, in shopping businesses. Just pointing that out.
So, so we, we kind of have a unique situation where we have a freestanding building that's in a, in, in a zone like it should have other buildings right, sitting right next to it, but it really acts more like a shopping center type of situation.
Is college dining fall under a shopping, not college dining, are they, plaza dining?
No, plaza dining is also not compliant.
So they're not part of the master sign?
No.
Approval for that?
No.
No, for that shopping, no, I think they're separate.
So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, just.
Next time you come back, there's a CVS in Riverhead, down on Long Island. I'd be curious to know, how much square footage do they have on their signage?
Where is it at?
Riverhead.
On Long Island? Oh, I was gonna go take a look at it, no, I don't think so.
No matter how far you wanna drive.
What's significant or not to you?
There's not a lot of signage, and I'm just curious if I'm not seeing it, if it's blocked out by trees.
Have you been to the one in Las Vegas?
No.
I've been up on it as well. It's a district, all relative.
Yeah.
This is, of course, the highway district, it's a commercial district, but it's also got, uh, some ambiguity, see, uh, bank that's there, you know, is an old lovely white building. And, um, that tone perhaps would have been more desirable for, you know, the area. As it is, we have this, this, well, less desirable mix. So let's have you folks do the very best you can for New Pauls.
I, 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 I think, I think this is, the, the, this is, this is quite a capitulation from where we started out. You know, again, you know, the, the, the project needs to, you know, financially rise and fall on its, on its, on its own merit here. You know, the, the architecture of the building has been greatly increased from before. Again, you know, the, the signage, uh, the signage variance we're seeking, you know, has been reduced from two seventy-one down to fifty-seven square feet. Again, I, two, I think two important things to consider here are the fact that we have a corner lot, and we have speeds in front of this lot, in front of this development, that, that are, that are pretty high, you know, we're not down in a village area, uh, and, and that, that's frankly something to be considered when you're looking at signage on, on the building. Both from an advertisement point of view, but also from a safety point of view too, you know, you don't want people, you know, hitting the brakes and, same deal. People make bad choices when they, when, when, when they're driving, unfortunately, so.
I think, you know, the other thing, what I try to convey, and I understand every town has a code, and every town has their, um, their pride and their individual charm and whatnot. But the, the signage on the building needs to, needs to tie into the architecture, it needs to tie into the environment where it's placed. Like, just like I said, we mentioned Long Island, I don't know what that one looks like, and Las Vegas is totally different, it's, all depends on where it's placed.
Looks just like that.
And the, the, a twenty square foot sign on this building, uh, after, with all the investment that they're putting in between the changes in the architecture, or just building the building as they first started out, you're not, it's, it's useless, a twenty square foot sign on that size of a building. This is a, is it thirteen thousand square feet or twelve thousand square feet?
And if somebody would say, they're smaller building than.
We're almost, no, yeah, I mean, we're, we're almost two hundred feet from the street, I believe, a twenty square foot sign on this building is just, it makes absolutely no sense to me.
We'd actually get to the point where it's gonna look, it would look off on the building, the, the, the small, the small size of it.
I mean, the drive-through, I mean, I mean, that's something, I mean, that's secondary, but those two signs that flank the entrance are utmost important to have those.
Um, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm also knowing Stop and Shop is a little bit more in two hundred feet back, and.
But their sign's four feet high.
I, I don't, I don't know what their square footage is.
It's between three and four.
But, but they're within, Stop and Shop's within, because they're in a shopping center.
Stop, stop.
Stop and Shop, Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop meets the requirements of the code, when Stop and Shop was being built, and that plaza was being redone, this code was updated to include the master sign plan portion of the code, that significantly increased the sign, s, the size of the signage that was permitted. Okay, because the signage that was stipulated in the code for highway business was not large enough for the size of the buildings and for people to safely see from the street. It was worked on with a number of people, um, it took a long time for them to get through it, but they got through it. So they are compliant, Peter Harris is compliant, Rite Aid is compliant, we're still working with Shoprite, Shoprite is not compliant.
That's interesting.
Well, you mentioned the setback between Stop and Shop and this is similar, that's probably three hundred square foot of signage on the front of that building. To take that, imagine putting fifty square, uh, thirty square feet on there, or twenty, it's ridiculous. It'd be like two, probably three of these letters is gonna represent that much, might even be pushing it at that.
Well, the reason I bring that up, and I was talking with the gentleman for the motel, and this is just me, if I'm looking for something or I need something, I go right to the phone, I'm sure, most of you guys do, just pharmacy or something like that, so it's, uh.
You do do that, and I do that, and I understand the chuckles I get when I say that you gotta have a science to negotiate and enter a plaza, uh, plaza or someplace safely. I'm on the road every single night of the week, I'm always in a different town, I'm always looking for a restaurant, I might be looking for a pharmacy, a gas station, I have navigation in my car and whatnot. And when I go into town, you can't, if some, you can't find anything, I don't, you need to have this appropriate identification, especially at the street level, to know where you're going. Not everybody lives in New Pauls, I'm in a different town almost every night of the week.
And yet, when you're in commercial areas, I'm sure you find this too, because I know I certainly do, there is such a, often, such a clutter of signs that none of them stand out clearly, and they are useless because there is such clutter.
I agree, and I think what we have here is absolutely far beyond clutter, we've come a long way from what we had originally. And it's appropriate for this size building, and for where it's placed from the street, and the traffic, the speed of the traffic, it, it, it makes perfect sense for this building. It's absolutely not clutter, and you need to have it.
The size of, you know, the use of the building and the size of the building is compliant with the code, you know, I, 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 you know, so it's, it's not too big of a building for the site, it's, it's.
Do you know what the percentage is?
Of, of the building. Of lot coverage on the building?
Lot cover?
Uh, yeah.
Two, two available lot coverage on that lot?
It's on the, on the site.
Is it somewhere on the block?
Lot coverage of five point four percent, fifty percent is allowed, so for the overall property, you're allowed a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. We're providing thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty. We're providing thirty-three thousand two hundred twenty-five square feet for the building. Building in this area is allowed with forty feet, and the building itself is at twenty-two foot four.
And do you know what the elevation is of where the building is being built?
Sure. The finished floor of the building is going to be approximately three hundred ninety-eight. So looking at grades, especially along two ninety-nine, it'll be approximately four hundred, so fully finished floor is gonna be approximately two feet.
Yep.
Below two ninety-one.
Thank you.
On, on a separate, just for curiosity, what percentage of CVS, their business comes from drive-thru? Any idea? Just ballpark.
I don't, I don't have any idea, but until you need one at two o'clock in the morning with a sick kid and you're alone, it's great.
Is this gonna be twenty-four hours?
No.
So, okay. Okay, so we, who. You wanna move on to the parking issue, or, or what do you think? You would still wanna talk about signs?
No, I'm good on the signs.
Okay. Parking.
The, the park, the parking issue, some, some similar situation here. Again, you know, because we're on this corner lot, we, we have the burden on this property of having two front yards. The, the actual property line is set pretty far back from the edge of pavements on both of, both of the adjoining roads. I think we're like forty-five feet on one and fifty feet on, on another. Yeah, and, and so, so basically, you know, we end up with twenty-two spaces in the front yard setbacks, so this is called the yard setbacks. We originally were at twenty-nine, we managed to reduce it by seven and, and move, move some of those around. We, we still have the twenty-two, some of them are just barely, as the line cuts, I mean, it's just, you know, cuts the slightest corner of it. That, that, that parking is necessary, because again, because the, the use of this, the nature of what we're proposing here as, as a pharmacy and retail facility, you, you imagine, we, we've all gone to CVSs and, and their competitors, you, you wanna have parking close to the front door. You have, you know, a lot of people that use the facility are elderly, they're, they're not feeling well. Most times when they come here, so you wanna try to get spaces that are close to the door. And hence why, why the parking layout is, is, is the way it is. We, we did play around with this quite a bit with the planning board and, and went, went through different iterations of it. I'm not making shit and setting up and down, yeah, we, we went through quite a few iterations. And we ended up, we really think this is the best proposal as of now, but we do, because of that double front yard, we end up with this situation of having twenty-two spaces in, in the front yard setback. Now, again, that, that also leaves this area to be able to add quite a bit of landscaping to, to shade that, that parking area. We've added islands into the parking area where, where we can put more landscaping in there. So I think the look from the street, it's not gonna look burdensome from, from, from the street. Again, just because of these two front yard setbacks, we end up in a kind of weird situation.
I don't know if that was submitted with the file, but here's kind of like a sightline we did, where you can see, you know, pretty much Route two ninety-nine, you can see that, you know, pretty much from Route two ninety-nine, you'll, you'll pretty much see the tops.
This is looking from two ninety-nine.
Looking from two ninety-nine, you'll actually see the tops of the cars based on the grade differential. And, and I know Charles had mentioned before, as far as the setbacks, if you look at the setback in the actual parking, you know, especially from Route two ninety-nine, you'll, you run anywhere from sixty-five feet to seventy feet from the edge of the pavement. On North Putt, you run anywhere from sixty feet to a hundred twenty feet. So just to give you a sense of the scale, sixty feet is approximately the length of this room, from this wall to that wall. So if North Putt is that wall, essentially the front of your car is gonna be right here, which is facing that. So, and then also within that distance, you are gonna have landscaping. We are providing street trees, there'll also be the rail trail that runs along there too with, with intermittent landscaping as well.
Is that sixty feet from this closest, this most encroaching parking spot?
Yeah, that's correct.
To.
To, to the edge of the road, and then as you get to the corner.
So it's much further over here?
Yeah, as, as you get to the corner, it's a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
And then it runs from sixty to like seventy-five feet along there. So, so again, you know, approximately the length of this room, I, I would figure is about sixty feet.
And you're not using any of this other available pad space for your parking, correct?
Uh, no. And again, when you look at the CVS, again, their, their business model with, with the corner location, you know, when, when you look at the type of clientele that goes in there, especially years of pharmacy, because the way the pharmacy is set up, you know, obviously we, we have the corner location with the parking in the front for security purposes.
Yep.
Also too, you have elderly going in, the ill and so forth. You don't want them coming from around the back of the building, especially where you have your loading operations going on, your drive-through operations.
And your interest from two ninety-nine.
And so forth. So you wanna, you wanna keep a lot of that separate from where your actual pictures are gonna be coming in from.
No, if, if, and I'm just saying, you know, the base of goal mostly of those front yard setbacks, and, and New Poles and most any town is that you don't wanna have a parking, you know, feel like it's imposing on the street. Well, you know, here, we certainly don't have that situation because of the, because of, because of the setbacks. So there, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're pretty, very far back from, from the road.
And of course, we don't have a landscaping plan.
No, there's not a landscaping plan, that, that, that's, that's something that would still need to be, to be developed.
Yeah, will be developed, but again, you know, we'll have, you know, especially right in front of the parking spaces themselves, you'll probably have, probably low-volume shrubs, probably about thirty inches in height, block headlight glare as the cars pull in. There'll also be, uh, street trees, uh, do have an elevation, you know, that we're showing the enhanced architectures. Yeah, you can kinda see, you know, pretty much some of the, you know, some ornamental trees will probably be planted in the parking lot itself. On that cross-section there, you do see some street trees out, out.
Three of them, yeah.
Yep.
If, you know, if the landscaping plan is gonna look like this, it's very sparse, you know.
Well, no, no, I mean, honestly, we have right now, it's just, I mean, when we do file, we are gonna have a full grading, full drainage, full landscaping, lighting plan and everything. You know, this right now is really conceptual purposes from the layout that really identifies the bulk variances in the layout of the plan from a dimensional standpoint. But no, you will have a full landscaping plan which will be compliant with the, with the New Poles ordinance. And actually, as you can see from here, especially when we've gone around the building, you know, it's probably been, you know, probably even something like that would be more so.
Can I say this for a second? Yeah.
I just wanna just go back to the sign for just one second.
Sure.
Because I didn't see that, I was, so you were talking about having a thirty-square-foot or a twenty-square-foot sign on that building. Really wouldn't do much, but you're gonna have a six-foot? Six square foot drive-thru sign at the front of the building?
What are you referring to?
I'm just saying.
Uh, that's, that's actually in the parking lot, so when people actually come through the parking lot, it's, it's really a directional sign to get them over to the drive-thru.
It's on the, on the side of the building itself.
This is right here, so it'll actually be within the park, actually, you probably won't even see that sign from any of, from the roadway.
Are you referring to the, to ground directions?
It's a directional, yeah, it's a ground directional right here.
Yeah.
That's just to help people navigate.
Through the parking lot.
Locate them around to the drive-thru.
Is that gonna be blocked by car parking?
It's actually towards, yeah, we, we, we can actually pull them a little bit closer to get that out there, because as you can see, we do extend a little bit beyond.
And certainly, the, the order, you know, we, we don't have a full site plan submission into the planning board, but again, we, we, we need to know what variances are obtainable, not obtainable. You know, the, the development of those plans are quite expensive. Certainly, you know, with the parking situation or with, with the setbacks on the parking lot, if the board was gonna have a condition about site, you know, about, about landscaping, that, that's certainly a reasonable condition that could be made on, on any variance granted, so. That's, that's, that's a very, very typical approach, so.
Uh, we will be doing a secret determination, going through with all the requirements that we see on, on the site. The contingent, you know, there's two conditions or two variances are, uh, depending on the site plan. So if, if you're going, if you, and again, you don't have to make a decision now, but they need the indication that, how do I draw up my site plan?
Right.
Without, uh, uh, knowing whether I'll get a variance or not. So, well, I guess at this stage of the game is try to answer your questions on the variances, where the need is and what the requirements are. We've gone through this same material for you. And, and, so we're at kind of the stopping point too, and that continuation of reviewing this project hinges on whether those are gonna be viable or not. And, and again, you don't have to make a decision on it, uh, at, at this time, obviously, because we haven't done a secret determination yet on it. We usually use secret determination to both.
You've started the secret pattern?
Uh, no, we're still at the conceptual stage. We got some parts in.
Right, the, 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 the planning board has, has set themselves up as lead agency for the project. That, that, that's been, so there's been a coordination, but.
Yeah, and we've gotten some parts in. But, uh, we haven't sat down and, and, through the entire determination yet. But again, it, it's kind of like a, a circle, or, and one hinges on the other.
So what, what we're asking this board is to, you know, take it, take it to the next step and set a public hearing, because we, we don't know what other comments there may be out there from the public. We, we hope there's nothing but praise that would come in, but, you know, I'm also a realist too, you know, so.
You can always hope.
I can always hope. I'm always hopeful. You know, the older I get, the more hopeful I get too.
You're in New Poles.
I, I, well, it, it happens almost anywhere, yeah, so. You know, so, so we'd like to go, you know, to the public hearings stage and see what happens with that, understanding that, you know, coordination with secret with the planning board or whether the zoning board would feel comfortable making their own secret determination about the variances, that, 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 that all has to come after, after the public hearing, so, so.
Shall we, we have one?
Can I ask before you?
I'm sorry, Joe.
Talking about the site, the corner lots, State Highway, North Putt Corners Road, signage signs. Are, are there, um, I don't know, guidelines, recommended, recognizable standards when you have this type of configuration and the traffic and the rest of it as to size of sign for the safety, not just convenience, but the safety of pedestrians who are looking for things and also trying to drive? I mean, we, we often hear about when you're on the thruway and you're going sixty-five miles an hour versus when you're on a country road and you're going forty-five miles an hour. There are arguments about the signage that the eye can see at sixty-five versus what it can see at thirty-five. Are there standards?
There are studies out there for the highway signage, for signage that you're actually gonna see, like that's right in front of you as you're approaching. I don't know if there's much information out there for something that you're passing by. I can't tell you what's going in the other direction, where they're making everything bigger because of, um, you know, people are driving as they're, they're older driving, you'll see they just implemented those changes nationally on, on highway signs. All the lettering and the signs are actually bigger, much bigger. But as far as studies relating to that.
And because I'm thinking, you know, there's traffic coming in from South Putt that is looking.
There's legibility.
For something and also the way we get to it, as well as coming up the main street, looking at something and the way to get to it. Coming this way, you see the back of the building, you may not see the side unless you're looking out your head.
Which is the reason for that latter side.
Which is the reason for the latter side.
Latter side, yes.
Which is up here at the corner.
Right.
Admitted, but that's what I say, taking into account all of the visuals, are there any kinds of?
There's legibility studies. But, um, not so much what you're, what you're talking about, because there's so many variables that come into play.
I'm granted.
For every site. Um, the closest thing that I think that you could come up with that actually has solid information would be the highway stuff, which is, like I said, going the other way, they're actually making everything bigger.
Many towns now, I don't know if New Poles, I know many towns even like the street signs themselves, you know. You know, Butler Avenue, you know, they're, they, they look huge when you're standing there looking at them, or when you're driving in the car, you go, oh, I can see the sign, how wonderful.
Going into, well, out of town on two ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Count the number of road directional signs. Route signs, group signs, thirty-two, two ninety-nine, the rest of it. Look, look at the signage of government.
Well, roads would just continue on straight.
And all of those are put there by the state and going to county.
Yeah.
And every time, but.
True.
Okay, shall we get started with the, the public hearings for these folks? And entertain a motion that we open the public hearing for, what do we call it, CBS? November, whatever, twelfth, Wednesday. So move.
Second.
In favor?
Aye. Aye.
We will see you then.
Hey, thank you so much.
Unfortunately, we have those other three public hearings too, they should not take, hopefully they will not take long, but who knows?
We'll wait, because chairs are comfortable.
Don't anticipate.
It's okay, it's okay. Thank you so much, you so much.
Okay, folks, thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Thank you, I was just counting on that.
Your business, all business, all, all business, any business?
Or administrative.
Administrative business?
That too.
While we're still discussing the CBS application, we're fortunate to have Mike Calamano, Chair of the Planning Board here, and I'd like to boldly ask for his reactions.
Uh, yeah, well, they came before us with the sign, and they've come a, a pretty far away. We've met with them. So we had a meeting and Jeff and I have met with them too, to look at those two variances a couple before you. The sign variant was, we weren't compliant, they gave us enough information to give you a recommendation or not.
Uh-huh.
So we always stick with the, uh, unless we're convinced, we stick with the size of like, uh, beauty sign. Though they didn't make a, two notes that they are far off the road. They have shrunk the signs now, they've taken, we got them down to part, I think, um, they wanted to go on. But, you know, from, from their standpoint, they're a standalone building in a, in a corner of a potential shopping mall. Reason we asked for the other, the other sites, we wanted to make sure that whatever we created on that site did not prevent the development of something else on that site. So give us an example of something else that could go with it. So they showed two other pad locations and theoretically somebody else could come into and situate that sign. So they showed two other pad locations that theoretically somebody else could come into and situate that sign. And I, I would think of it, the four guys right by the thruway or down on, on Park Corners, further down, is gonna be before you too, because nobody will be able to see those buildings, consideration that goes in there. But the board at, at the stage, um, and again, the speed limit's forty in front of there, two ninety-nine, um, and, and they are a standalone facility. So the board really came up with, those cases weren't made successfully in front of us. And we thought, that's why there is no recommendation for it. As far as the front parking, um, we went back and forth on this numerous times. We have certain board members that don't believe anybody should get a variance. Building load is perfect as it is and nobody needs a variance to build anything, um, which out of business, I know. So, so we'll never get a unanimous, uh, view on anything that we'll send you as far as, uh, variances. But, um, the other side of the coin was they, they are physically well off the, off the road. Making sure that, that rail trail has capabilities. Nothing's gonna impinge on the development of that since that's part of the, the trail, uh, development. And, um, I agree with Linda that, uh, we got some landscaping, but we got more landscaping to go, but they haven't done a site plan yet. They, you know, this is very unusual for us. You're seeing, getting a site plan.
Yeah.
You gotta lay out everything and then you go over everything. This is a conceptual after conceptual after conceptual. So we don't have a site plan per se that lays the whole thing out. And we've been at it for a year plus on these conceptuals, uh, which is very unusual. But, um, again, the key hinges on, um, way people are gonna stand on, on the variances as they're gonna request. It goes, um, it's gonna be a yes or no on, on the project on the focal. And they're trying to get your side before they go and develop the rest of it there. But, you know, if you have conditions, we always incorporate all your conditions right into our finding statement. Verbatim if you do it, uh, but we always do incorporate that and, uh, we will continue to do that. So if you see something on there, I know we talked about landscaping on it. If you wanna be even more specific on it at the stage or act, because you don't have a site plan in front of you. Be as specific as you want, uh, that meets the requirement. We did, did get them to put parking on the back. The first ones weren't. They had a little parking up front. So there were a bunch of parking spaces in the back. We did put islands to break up the parking. We have, we have no more, can't have twelve, twelve, uh, parking spots in a row without an island breaking it up. So we've had to go through that on it. But, uh, so we, we've, we've been working with them to try to put this up here. So I just have, what was it? If, if that was a mall, or that was a shopping center?
Well, for a master sign, a master sign.
For a master sign.
Yeah, master sign, seven, seven businesses.
Okay.
Would be eligible for a master sign.
This is nowhere close to that.
Let's talk about the application itself at the public hearing.
Yeah.
This was informative.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might just, yeah, you know, you know, no, don't be here.
And it was, uh, yes, I, I just took advantage of that that you were here and I really appreciate it. I think.
Thanks, honey. Thank you.
Thank you much.
They added more parking back here.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk about it. I, I wonder if they need all that parking. Okay. So we will, we will wait for further discussions until, on this, until, uh, November. And I think, I keep losing my attention. At this point, thank you. Any old business that's to be brought up? No?
Actually, I'm sorry.
Up, up.
Is there any way we can get a, contact them to do a walk-through at least by the area, just to get?
Who, CBS?
Yeah.
I'm sure that we could.
Just like we've.
I'm sure we could. Yeah.
I would like to just go out there and physically.
And have, get a, get a sense of it. I'm thinking of the site itself.
Maybe there's somebody there who would like to walk us through.
Log around and, yeah, yeah. Kelly, did you, did, uh, hear, hear what Ed said? Do you, you think that, uh, we could do that?
Yeah, I'll ask.
Ask them, yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
It would be good. It would be good.
Will it be the same kind of thing like when we did the walk the last time when we can't have quartering? Is that?
Where are you, what's, what are you walking?
The proposed CBS site.
With, with, with Will Moray project, some of us went out there and walked it. And I would just like to have someone come out there and show me where.
Where the building's gonna be, where the park is gonna be, where the entrances are going to be. So we get some sense of, you know, the actual grounds and the layout of it, because I can look at these site plans and, you know, get some sense of, of what's gonna happen, but it's always clearer to me to see the actual.
It's a pretty rough site.
No, it's a very rough site.
I mean, you, you can go, I mean, you can go together as long as it's for information gathering purposes. Somebody's gonna show you approximately where is this entrance on the plan in the field. Maybe where is approximately fifty feet back? What, what you can't do is discuss the application or discuss it in any way amongst yourselves while you're out there or otherwise. But if you're going purely to get information.
To clarify locations.
That, that's okay, but you can't combine business.
We wouldn't.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll be on that, Kelly. Thank you very much. Good idea. Any administrative issues at this point? Then, anything from you, Stacey?
Well, did we hear back from Rich?
No. Anything from you, Joe? We haven't seen you on, uh, Will Moray?
Yes.
Kelly was in touch with him by email. They're postponing it, you know, obviously from tonight, but.
I didn't hear what, what.
We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Rich was gonna contact Will Moray.
Yes.
And he heard back?
They, they agreed to, to the extension, yes.
Okay.
Will Moray did.
But we don't have any.
But, well, it, you know, uh, they, they agreed to the extension now, but I think that in, well, the November meeting is so crowded. I can't see putting, Kelly? I know Will Moray had agreed to an extension. I'm thinking, you know, that, that we have to take that vote because they won't extend it forever and we probably will have a full board at the November meeting. However, we have such a crowded agenda. Um, do you think we can get them to wait until the December meeting? Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, we'll have to put them on November too.
I'll put it to coach.
But I'd much rather do it on December. Okay.
What are, what's the, we know, what is the date for the December meeting? And are there any conflicts?
December is the ninth.
Yes, it is.
The ninth, early one. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. So moved?
Second.
In favor? Okay. Thank you, folks, a lot.